Kristen, has roll call been taken?
Yes.
Chief Senator, will you do our sounders tonight?
Scott Sutter, Chief of Police.
Don Gray, DPDW Director.
Kristen Kenyac, City Clerk.
Alan Glass, City Manager.
Jerry Link, City Council.
Anne Howe, City Council.
Wayne Gilder, City Attorney.
Liz Armstrong, Mayor.
Brad Dick, Mayor Protown.
Tom Hicks, Council.
Denise Miller, City Council.
Brenda Simons, City Counselor.
Okay. And we do have a piece of correspondence tonight about the Genesee County Board Appointment Opportunities. Ellen, enjoy. Say anything about that or...
Uh, no, just the information's in there. Uh, encourage anybody that's interested in any one of those to just, uh, follow the information and submit an application to the board, so. Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. So we're gonna move on now to the comment. Individuals wishing to speak will be called upon utilizing the completed public comment cards. Remarks should be addressed to the presiding officer, and it is not a time for debate, for comments, or questions for council and/or staff to answer on the search. Questions will be answered during the meeting if the information is readily available. If answers are not available during the meeting, council or staff will contact the individual within one week or seven business days or when the information becomes available. No person shall have the right to speak more than once on any particular subject until all persons wishing to be heard on that subject have the opportunity to speak. The first comment of the night is Judy Preston.
I would just want everybody to recognize John Claude. He's done a great job at doing, taking care of the cemetery. Outstanding. And stuff. I just want everybody to recognize that. Next, I know there's an agenda coming up tonight about the Ethic Ordinance. I emailed everybody on the board. I know it's gonna become a Freedom of Speech Act. And I don't feel it's right for a mayor to target anyone who's united on the board because of a lot that she did back on the board. I don't feel that she should be aligning taxpayers for a political gain. I don't think she should be telling stories to people to feel sorry, to possibly hand them money to help them. I just want all of you to know that it is not politically impure. I do know you guys are voted in to do the best job you can. But to go have somebody on that board to backstab each and one of our council members and our lawyer and our city manager is flat out wrong. And each and every one of you, whatever happens tonight, I don't, I don't have nothing to hold against anybody. But I want you to know, definitely, she's going after four of you. She gets rid of you, she's going after the manager and the lawyer. And I'm straightforward. Thank you.
Monica Lerner.
Monica Lerner, 152 West Ralston Road, Linden. First off, um, on behalf of the American Legion Auxiliary, I want to thank the communities for supporting the poppy sales and for the Memorial Day Parade. Mark was very thrilled to ride in the Army Jeep, in the back of the Army Jeep, and he was there doing a lot of waving, and so that meant a lot. Also, on behalf of the American Legion Auxiliary, 119, Linden, um, we started a new thing for the kids, um, for the summer. Well, it's for the kids and it's also for the downtown businesses. It's titled "Find the Book Great." And it's kind of a treasure hunt, so to speak, for kids to, um, visit the different businesses and look for where the crate is. We've published a clue. The first clue is "A River Runs Through It," which, by the way, happens to be a book itself. So, moving on to, um, kind of what my point was on the "Know the Law" sign was that if they're gonna post something like that, instead of it looking like, um, they're dressed, you know, like a construction worker with a reflective vest and all, and they weren't up by the other people at the four corners, they were back. So, at first glance, it's, okay, what law are we talking about here? So if they could just put, you know, white cane, then there wouldn't be that hesitation when pulling through there. So... Okay, civic alert last month. We had sirens go off, but there was no alert that came through, um, at least on my phone. When I called City Hall the next day, they couldn't give me an answer, didn't know why, and said that they would call back. No call back was received. Also, when they were testing the sirens over the weekend, there was no alert for this either. Okay, um, West Ralston Road. My driveway, or one of my driveways, has that black fencing blocking across the whole thing. So I can't take my mower in to mow the lawn there. I wasn't asked. It was just assumed that you could block off the driveway. I don't know. I don't, I don't get it. And I have pictures to prove it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kelly Zinn.
Kelly Zinn, 265 East Ralston Road. Um, I've noticed a pattern lately with our garbage pickup. It seems to be, sometimes they're picked up at 8:00 AM, other days they're picked up at 8:00 PM. And I've noticed lately that with our yard waste, it's getting picked up the next day. And same with recycle, and I've got neighbors whose recycle and yard waste is blowing all over my yard because they're sitting out at the road for two or three extra days. Last week on Friday morning, my yard waste was still not picked up, and I noticed that our neighbors had had all of their yard waste picked up. So I reached out to our city manager, and she got her staff on it immediately, and I'm very appreciative of that. It was picked up about 7:30 Friday night, which is great. I mean, it's better than waiting till this week. Um, I'm just kind of concerned because my husband works all over the state, and he says he sees this garbage company popped up everywhere. So I kind of have a suspicion that they've overextended themselves, and I'm just wondering if that's possibly something that you guys could maybe revisit the contract, see, see maybe you can strum them into being more efficient with the trash pickup. Because I know just a few months ago, we passed that city ordinance where trash cans can't sit at the road for more than 24 hours, and now they're sitting at the road for two and three days. So, that was just one of my concerns. And my other concern that I have noticed a lot this year is the crosswalk over by the City Hall. There's a lot of foot traffic crossing, and there's heavy, heavy traffic going through, and it's hard as a driver to see that there's people in the crosswalk. And over by Linden L, you have a flashing light that people can push to kind of alert people. I'm wondering if that's something that the city could look into, maybe do a lighted crosswalk just for safety because our foot traffic and our road traffic is increasing tremendously, especially with all the construction going on, people are coming through our city. That's just my other concern. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, there was an additional piece, um, that was asked of me or Ellen to read tonight from Sarah Banks. Hello, Ellen. I am unable to attend tonight's meeting for public comment. I'd ask to bring this to your attention and would like the comment read tonight by you or letters. As a resident of West Broad Street, the traffic and speeding has become a significant between Byron Lake Road and Hyatt Lane. Residents of this block have repeatedly asked the Linden Postmaster to have our mailboxes safely placed on the south side of the road. She refuses and has sent us all letters that all mailboxes must be moved to the north side so she can safely deliver. No one on this block thinks it's fair or safe for the residents. I realize this is a federal matter, but if the Linden Police could do something to alleviate this speeding, then possibly contact the Linden Postmaster. That is much safer for residents and the carrier to receive mail on the south side of the road. I appreciate your support and efforts in this matter. Thank you so much. Sarah Banks. Are there any further public comments? Hearing and seeing none, I close public comment.
Madam Mayor, do you want me to address any of the stuff right now?
Yes, please.
Okay. Ms. Preston, as you know, the ethics issue is on the agenda tonight, and Attorney Gilder will address that later on as we move into the agenda. Ms. Lerner, the civic alert, so our civic alert system wasn't built out to, to, to do anything weather-related, if that's what you're referring to. I know that on my phone, I did receive weather alert to take cover in that one of the last storms. But our Civic Plus is not built out to do weather alerts, like, it's just for, um, more notification of anything that's going on related to just city-specific. The weather, the National Weather Alert System would have the systems in place for you to be able to receive notification from them. So, but the civic alert system that I'm aware of, Kristen, and I thought that the question when you called that day was answered, but I apologize that you did not receive an answer back, so, um, I apologize about that. But that's, um, uh, that's how we have structured the civic alert system. If it's more sophisticated than that and can connect to the National Weather Alert System, I'm not aware of that, but I can definitely look into it. So, so, um, and as far as the, um, I'm, I'm, I think you're referring to the Lions Club with the white cane "Know the Law." Okay. I'm not sure, you know, I'm, I'm sure they're trying to bring awareness to their cause. I, I can't speak to that necessarily, but I would encourage you maybe to, to discuss with the Lions Club, maybe your thought on how they could approach it from a, a future standpoint on their, um, road collection. The Ralston Road, the blocking off of the driveway, Don, do you want to address that?
Sure. So the contractor's required to put silt, protective silt fence in in areas that would have an impact on the wetland just to prevent runoff and stuff from making it in there. Uh, if it's keeping you from gaining access to a particular driveway, uh, I can work with the contractor and see if they can come up with a, with an alternate plan, which may include wings or something coming out the side so that the driveway remains open. Is it what you would like me to do?
Yeah, and it doesn't have to be a big...
Okay. Thank you.
Are you talking about the weather?
Yeah.
Okay, the Smart 911?
Yeah.
Okay. So it looks like the Smart 911?
Yeah, Genesee County.
Genesee County Smart 911 has the weather alert, um, associated with their app, Monica. But I consider...
And you can sign up for it. You can go to their website, uh, Genesee County, anyone who wants to sign up.
Could we put the link right on our page?
Sure.
I bet enough people would want that.
Yep. I can follow up on that.
And I can send it to you. I've got it right here.
Perfect. Thank you. In regards to the, to the garbage, um, I think it was Kelly that asked the question. So we, we have had, um, uh, some frustration in the past couple of weeks with same, same thing that you've expressed. We have worked with the, um, priority to get it resolved. It seems like they've been able to resolve the issues relatively quickly after we bring them to their attention. I know that it's still frustrating and stuff, so we'll continue to, to keep that line of communication open with priority and make sure that they're fulfilling the requirements of the, of the contract and things. The crosswalk by City Hall, Chief, do you have anything to add to that specifically right now or just...
You know, we can signage maybe potentially.
Okay. And then the, um, Ms. Banks, the West Broad Street issue, um, as far as the postmaster. I, I was able to speak with the postmaster late this afternoon to understand the situation a little bit better in reference to the mailbox situation. And so not all residents on West Broad received that, um, that notice. It was just, uh, individuals with mailboxes on the south side. It does sound like there's a bit more to the situation specifically. Um, and, and I'll clarify that it is not a city-related issue. She reassured me of that. But she encouraged anyone that has a question specific to have noticed that was received or to anything, uh, related to the post office, to please give her a call and discuss. It was also, she communicated not a mandate, it was a kind request. So that way they can, um, now, in the letter, it did mention that it was because of a headquarters mandate in reference to the line of travel. And so that's why the letter was sent for, for multiple reasons. She said that it was, um, they sent that letter for multiple factors, efficiency, safety, all of those things. I did tell her that if there were safety-related issues, as far as anything in response to the city of Linden, to please let us know, and she reassured me that she would. So, uh, it sounds like she is well-aware and willing to help individuals resolve that, but it was not a hard, fast mandate to move them. It was just a kind request. And after talking to her, I, I understand why they would, but she says, we can't force individuals to do that, but just ask that they would maybe, um, you know, as a courtesy. So hopefully that helps to answer, um, that. So I think that was most of them. And if there's anything I missed, we'll follow up if it's necessary. Yeah.
All right. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. City Council Meeting Minutes from May 12th, 2025. Parks and Rec vacancy appointment of Larry Allen. Resolution number 11-25, establish request for funding Category B program on East Ralston. Resolution number 12-25, establishment request for funding for Category B program. Hickory Road, or Hickory Street, and financial report. Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we go ahead and approve the consent agenda by second.
Dick?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Simons?
Yes.
Link?
Yes.
Armstrong?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
And so now we're going to move on to our discussion item, uh, BSA Cloud Service.
So, Madam Mayor and Council, um, as you guys know, I think I mentioned it at a previous meeting, that we were considering the cloud-based system with BSNA, moving to that, um, a little sooner than, um, uh, than later. So we're evaluating a transition of our BSNA software from locally hosted system, um, to BSNA's clouds, cloud-based platform. While the move is not yet mandatory, um, uh, we do anticipate that in the future it will be. And right now, we kind of feel like at this point, it's more based on, you know, we can kind of dictate, um, how we roll that out instead of waiting until it is something that we would wait until it is mandated. Um, some of the things that we considered in this conversation of, of timing, as you guys know, I also mentioned at a previous meeting that we are looking at replacing our server in the upcoming fiscal year. And how we house our, our, um, systems or software would factor into that replacement and things. So we looked at enhanced security and risk mitigation. So, you know, BSNA Cloud is gonna offer, you know, a professionally managed cloud security infrastructure, including firewall encryption and, um, intrusion detection, automated backups, data redundancy. We have had instances where our server has failed, and so we've had to, you know, to restore data. And, and the way that that's been restored is we've lost, you know, we've had to go back and restore backups. So, so, um, those are things we took into consideration. Increased system liability and support. BSNA manages updates, patches, and backups, um, relieving pressure on local IT, faster issue resolution directly by BSNA with less downtime or coordination delays. We experienced some issues when we tried to, um, transition the format of our bill, um, our utility bill. And part of that we understood was related to, um, a difference. And, and I think maybe you can address this too. I've asked Andrew, actually, from BSNA here tonight to kind of walk us through. So, so a lot of different factors, um, and, and so we're hoping that we can add just a discussion tonight and maybe have any of your guys' question answers related to that. So, um, with that, I guess I'll turn it over to Andrew and have him kind of walk us through the PowerPoint. And, um, we're not asking, obviously, for a vote tonight. This was something that would come back at a later date.
Well, thanks for having me, and you, you sold it for me, so I guess I'm done. I can keep this under now and now.
We researched this a lot, so...
Yeah. No. That was great. So this'll, this'll be quick. My name is Andrew Galvin. I am the Account Manager for the city of Linden and all of Genesee County. So I am, I'm a Genesee County resident myself. I live in Swords Creek. Genesee County is one of 11 counties, um, that I manage in the state for BSNA software. Um, and so really, my job is kind of the go-to at BSNA software for the municipalities, um, outside of support. So any questions, concerns, anything that you have, reach out to me, and I'd be happy to address those. So I've been at BSNA Software, um, for over nine years at this point. I was in the IT department for seven and a half years before becoming an account manager, so I have a lot of knowledge on the backend, uh, what the servers cost and things like that. So, uh, we can go on to the next slide there. If you don't know what BSNA Software is, it was pretty evident in the financial reports because that is where that data is stored, and that's where that data is pulled from. So all of the information that is essentially running the city, uh, behind the scenes, the finances, the utility bills, the property taxes, um, is all BSNA software, so for those that don't know. Uh, next slide. So what the city of Linden has today is what's referred to as our .NET or desktop service. That has been, uh, released since 2008. It's a 17-year-old product at this point. And in software world, that's, that's ancient. To give you an idea, our pervasive platform that came out before .NET also lasted 17 years. So as Ellen mentioned, while we do not have, uh, a date that we're forcing anybody to move over, the writing is kind of on the wall. The last platform change happened, um, after 17 years. We're now 17 years after the .NET release. So back, uh, about five years ago, late 2020, early 2021, um, is when we released BSNA Cloud. And, uh, I'll touch on it later on, but we have over 600 municipalities that have now moved over to BSNA Cloud. And Ellen really teed this up for me, so there's, uh, not a, not a whole lot of information to cover here. But one of the big things, uh, with moving to Cloud is access from anywhere. So today, you have to have a server, um, and if you want to access that data remotely, you have to have a VPN connection, and then you have to remote into your desktop at the City Hall in order to be able to view and then access that data. With BSA Cloud, it's a website. You go to bsacloud.com, all of your data is there. You could do your, uh, budget meetings and everything if you're plugged into a laptop, uh, as opposed to, you know, having to remote in to another machine that's at the, at municipal. Disaster recovery, which again, mentioned, but we have two, uh, data centers. We have a primary data center in Virginia. We have a backup, uh, data center in Arizona. Your data is never more than 15 minutes updated. We are taking a backup of your data every 15 minutes. It's stored in both locations. So if something was to happen, there was a natural disaster, there was a fire, tornado, whatever, at the data center in Virginia, we have your data, uh, stored in Arizona. We can move you over to that data center. You can backup and running in a very short amount of time. And you're only gonna lose at most 15 minutes of, of data. So that's huge. And one of the, one of the big differences, uh, between .NET and Cloud, um, is .NET has separate module or separate programs. So each program has to be locally installed on the workstation. You have to open up each individual program in order to access the data. So you're, you're opening up accounts payable, you're opening up general ledger, you're opening up tax. With BSNA Cloud, again, it's a web browser system. So you just go to bsacloud.com. All of your modules are listed in one place, and they're all fully integrated and communicating with each other at all times. So this just, this slide here, uh, just talks about some of the benefits and differences between .NET and Cloud, which a lot of things I, I just covered, disaster recovery, hardware requirements. You're no longer required to have that server. You don't need to put money, uh, into that server managing, maintaining the backups, the security, the antivirus, any of that. When you move to BSNA Cloud, we handle all of that for you, all of the responsibility and liability that falls on us. We handle the updates of that as well. So today, uh, you guys are having to go in on the first of the 15. You're having to download those updates for each one of the programs, and then install the update on each one of the programs on each computer. It doesn't sound like a lot, but when you're talking 30 to 40 minutes per staff member at twice a month, it's, it's quite a bit. So, uh, with BSNA Cloud, we do that for you. So we handle the, the updates on the first of the 15. You will see those updates automatically applied. We do those overnight, the night before. There's unlimited storage on BSNA Cloud. So today, your storage, your attachments, that's all limited by your server capacity and your server capabilities. With BSNA Cloud, that is unlimited. You can have as many attachments, images, whatever you want, because we do not, we do not limit that in BSNA Cloud. And then probably the biggest advantages are the workflows, um, in dashboards in BSNA Cloud that do not exist today in .NET. And this is really more for data transparency, uh, budget transparency. We have charts and graphs and different widgets that we can, uh, use in BSNA Cloud so that you can see all of that data more efficiently and effectively. You can go to the next slide. And this, uh, this slide here just goes through everything that I just mentioned. So disaster recovery, backups, reduction of liability, uh, ransomware resistance, which I didn't really touch on. But we have had several municipalities in the state of Michigan get hit with ransomware over the past couple of years. The city of Flint was one of them. Grand Traverse County was another one that just got hit, uh, about six months ago. What happens is, uh, somebody at the City Hall will click on a bad link or a bad attachment that allows a hacker into your network. They can then get into your server. They encrypt that SQL data, which is your BSNA data, and they literally hold it for ransom. There is nothing you can do unless you have a spare server with off-site backups, um, other than pay the ransom. And for some of these places, it's a six-figure ransom that they have to pay. So that's, that's huge. Less downtime because you're not worried about the server updates and having to reboot the server and things like that. Customizable dashboards, workflows, workspaces, again, we handle all of that. Access to real-time data from anywhere. So again, with it being a web, uh, web, web browser-based system, anybody can access it from anywhere, from, if you're in Florida, you can access it, and multiple people can access the same record at the same time, and they'll see, see those updates in real time. And I talked a little bit about the history, but this just showed, this is really just to show that this isn't our first time as, as BSNA Software doing a platform change. So we've been around for 40 years. We started on a DOS-based platform. We then moved to pervasive 10 to 12 years after, after we released, uh, our first platform. After pervasive, again, 17 years or so, uh, after that, we released our .NET system, uh, which is what you guys are on today. And then 2021 is when we officially launched BSNA Cloud. And this is, this is actually from, I think, I want to say two weeks ago. Um, and just to give you an idea of how rapidly other municipalities are committing to moving to Cloud, that number was 565, uh, units two weeks ago. It's now up over 600. I want to say it's somewhere between 610 and 615. So time is of, I mean, time is of the essence because, obviously, the longer that you wait, the longer the implementation time. Uh, you're gonna be put in that, in that implementation queue, uh, which right now is about a five-to-six-month backlog. So every, every week that you wait, there's more, uh, contracts that are coming in, and it's just gonna delay that. And that's it. I appreciate your guys' time. Thank you so much. Are there any questions?
President, do you have any questions?
I have no questions.
Oh, no, I read through the whole thing. I don't have any questions. I understand. This is a good way to go. Thank you.
Um, no, the presentation was good. The paperwork we got on it was really good. Thank you for coming.
Good, absolutely.
I have no questions. It sounds very, very nice.
Um, it's, I think it'd be a wonderful change because especially since it offers such great security and ease of updating and saves hours, so...
No, no questions. I know how, I know our server's gone down multiple times throughout the years, so it would definitely probably save us in the long run.
And additionally, um, I, obviously, you guys have the quote in there. And the way that we can do this now is that we can, we can spread it out over two years, um, instead of just doing it all in one year, so...
My, my question would be, when are we looking for?
So we would probably bring this back at the next, um, meeting, and then we would then, um, you know, after council decides, then we would, depending on the, the outcome, then we would obviously notify Andrew, get the, get everything signed that we need to and get on that list so we can start preparing for that transition. So, um, hopefully as soon as possible, but obviously it's up to City Council.
Can I ask this? So Ellen, what security system do we use now?
So all of our stuff is housed with VC3. That specific name, I couldn't tell you, but VC3, um, does all of our, our IT and security systems and things like that. And, um, I need to find some wood to talk on, but not on... It is not cloud-based. We have not had, uh, uh, I, I don't even want to put it out there, but we, it's been... but we, it's been reliable, but we have had instances where our server has went down and unfortunately takes down, you know, I mean, literally, BSNA is literally where we perform ninety-five percent of what we do in our day-to-day, so it poses some challenges.
And when a server goes down, then so does your firewall. And that's really dangerous.
Potentially, I guess it depends on the nature of the situation. I guess each instance is, is different, I guess, and, yeah, so. But we're, we're, we are looking at replacing, that's why kind of what's prompted this. We have to replace our server regardless because that server houses multiple other programs and things like that, obviously, for police, for fire, for all the other things that are not, you know, utilized through BSNA. But it is something that we're going to have to replace regardless, but not housing BSNA on that server does change the specs of it a little bit, and so.
And when you lose power, you do have backup generator, don't you?
We do. We do have a backup generator, so we lose power at city hall. At city hall, we have a backup generator, so, yeah.
Do any other residents have questions?
What did it cost if you moved your data or you just need certain files, or let's say catastrophe happens? What, what's the cost to bring your data back?
There is no cost. Yeah, that's, that's part of the annual support that they would pay. So, yeah, that's, that's.
What's the cost to run the whole program, bring in the program?
I can't see the.
Fifty-nine thousand.
That's the cost for the transition?
That's the total cost of the project, is the fifty-nine thousand, seven sixty-five. That includes the data conversion, the training, matching everything that you have on .NET today and bringing that over into cloud, as well as support. So you guys are paying for support today, and that support will continue with, with BSNA Cloud.
Any other resident questions? Hearing and seeing none, thank you so much for the time.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you guys.
Sorry to send to city hall.
No, that's all right. That's all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next discussion item is keeping up chickens' ordinance.
Yes, so this is something that Tom did ask me about a little while ago, and I asked if I would have Adam and, or just us look at overall, if there's anything we could do potentially, and had some suggestions on some revisions, and the keeping up chickens within the city limits. So Adam prepared for you guys in your packet, just a brief overview of how we do things and included our ordinance. And so really, it was just a chance to get it in front of you guys and give Tom and the rest of us a chance to just discuss, to see if it's something that you all are interested in. And if so, then we can, I can work with Adam to get any amendments and bring them back to city council at a later date, so. I will say that we had a lot of questions during COVID in regards to our keeping up chickens and things like that. And to my knowledge, I mean, I'm not the one up front answering the phones and stuff, but we don't have a ton of questions lately. I don't, I don't feel so. But again, I know some, some communities have changed theirs more recently and stuff, so just, just on here for discussion and I'm happy to try to answer or just have an open conversation about it.
Sure. I've been researching them, and Brighton and other cities are amending theirs slightly. We have an excellent ordinance right now, but there's a couple of things out that just need to be fine-tuned because there's going to be, people are more health-conscious, so they're going with their own eggs. Also, the cost of eggs. So there'll be more chickens coming in, which is fine because they help the community. There's two things in the amendment that I questioned was, they had a offset of two hundred feet from a residence, and as Adam looked in the, over our plots, that takes out most of the residents in the city because they don't have two hundred feet. If you look at Fenton's, they're twenty-five feet. Brighton's going to fifty feet, which I think fifty feet is perfect because that gives it enough room to where they're away from you, but you can hear the chickens and be able to take care of them. One of the main things that everybody came up with was no roosters in the city line. Because that's the one that's, that's the most annoying is just the sound of a rooster. Yes, they're great on a farm or something where you got more land, but in town, I believe that it's just the rooster should be taken out of the equation. So what I, what I would like to do is change it to fifty feet instead of two hundred and no roosters. That's all.
So, Mayor, may I speak on that? I have talked to many residents in, on Tignor Street, and they would like to see the chickens, you know, the fifty feet, because a lot of our properties don't have the two hundred feet, the fifty feet, and to have our chickens well-placed where they're secure, and definitely no roosters. I agree with Tom. I think it'd be a good thing.
Yeah, because the ordinance addresses the square footage that you can keep them in. They have to be enclosed. They can't be free-roamed. So the, the ordinance is good. We've got a very good ordinance compared to a lot of cities. There are just those couple little.
That's a great project for a four-H project for kids too, to not, you know, have bigger animals often. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I read through, the only question I had was, do we have a maximum chickens that any one person can have? I did read through it, but I can't remember that part. Is there a max?
We don't have a max. Fenton has a max of three, but three won't give you enough eggs for a family. If you've got a bunch of people doing three to six, then everybody's going to have to do it. What, what we're seeing is average flock is around twelve. And that'll feed two to three families. So people on both sides of them will get eggs. So it kind of balances out, so.
Does our dimension for the coop, does that give enough space for that many chickens? Okay.
Yeah, they're, they're giving us a hundred square feet of outside and twenty-five square feet of enclosure.
Okay. As long as they have enough space, that sounds like a great idea.
And a lot of people use a, what they call a tractor that has wheels on it, and they can pull it around the yard, so they get fresh green grass all the time. Yeah, so there's, there's some very unique kennels out there that are fair, available to the people, that are efficient, they're nice-looking, they're easy to maintain, maintain the manure, so it's, it's, it's not a problem.
Thank you.
I don't necessarily have a problem with it. I just, even, it's just figuring out the, you know, the square footage and the, you know, the limit. I would think we would want it to require a zoning permit so we know who has chickens and where.
Currently, there isn't a process for that.
Correct. That's what I mean. Correct. They would require the zoning permit so you would lay out your chicken coop on your property, or at least we would, you know, it would be reviewed so we know you could have it and it wouldn't interfere with your neighbors and such.
Sure. Yeah, that's important too, because we have a lot of yards that aren't fenced in, and if you put your chicken coop against someone's property line, you might find a few problems.
Well, I don't know, my neighbor fifty feet wouldn't even, you still couldn't do it.
I know that the average USDA on their website, they say average flock is six to twelve, and they want them to have at least twenty-five square feet, you know, at least for poultry, because, you know, it's not fair to keep them in those little tiny pens. And they're supposed to be kind, and most people think of the chickens as their pets too, so it's not just about having eggs too. They have them as their pets or therapy.
And in our ordinance, it does address that, not less than twenty-five square foot for rabbits or poultry. So it does address the minimal.
They could be bigger, but.
Yeah, it says no less than.
It also states that it follows the, the ordinance as per buildings offset from property lines that are already established. So you can't put it right next to it. It's got to be offset. Five feet, I think it is.
Tell them they're close.
Doesn't have to be, well, that depends on, they just have to be contained.
Jerry?
I don't have any questions. I don't follow the, people, biggest thing's the roosters. I mean, both my neighbors have chickens or had them. I don't have a problem unless it's a rooster at sunrise.
No crowing.
The only question that I have, I know we have quite a large population of coyotes, that kind of order. You can hear them every time the train goes. Would that include that in now residential areas, could that increase our numbers of coyotes coming into the city? That is the only question really that I, I guess I would like to, you know, do some research on that. And because if we can't, if, if, I know, I had to ask Chief Sutter here, or I sent someone to ask Sutter about the bow and arrow. So there, if there is no way to deal with coyote in the city of Linden, that would be a concern that I would have.
Yeah, I don't know how to answer that. I guess that's something that we can add to the list of questions to kind of follow.
We have more of a problem of aerial. Hawks, prairie falcons, owls at night, and eagles.
Cooper's hawks and red-tailed hawks.
That's one of the problems that it is with coyotes. I think I saw one coyote in fifteen years.
We haven't had, we haven't had attack from coyote yet, any animal or person that's had that here.
And there's, there's cats and dogs and everything everywhere. There's fight size for them.
I just, I hear, I can hear them, and I don't want them to penetrate into the city of Linden. If they get a taste of blood from a chicken, I don't, you know, that's the concern. Okay, do any residents, Monica?
So they have to hang to duck stew.
Yeah, that wouldn't be any.
They have to be penned up. Yep, so we don't have that popping again.
What about the removal of the feces from the chickens?
There's different ways that you can manage manure. I always did a deep litter, which was behind shaving eight to twelve inches deep. And once a month, you would go through and clean it up. There's never any smell. Some people will use a tray, and then once every couple of days, they'll clean the tray off, put it in garbage bags, or you mix great yard manure. Tomatoes and high-itch stuff, love it.
Yeah, and in our ordinance, it does address the sanitary requirements and things like that, the manure and stuff. So our ordinance does address it as it is now.
And we currently have a notches ordinance in there somewhere, so.
And I raised this on the farm. We use fox urine to keep coyotes away.
Fox urine, fox urine.
Yeah, we put on cotton balls.
If you have a problem with it, except in USAID. We really don't see them in town. You know, I live over by the railroad tracks. You hear them across railroad tracks, but they never come.
Ma'am, I do have one question. It's, it's, the ordinance is stating twenty-five square feet, but doesn't associate that with the number of chickens. So, I mean, if, if we set a quantity of chickens you're allowed to have, I would think that it would be so many square feet per chicken or per so many chickens.
And I can talk to Adam on best practice about that.
I believe that refers to a chicken, but it doesn't state it.
It doesn't, so we can just clarify. And I've got that written down.
The best practices for not drawing coyotes to your yard are that, keep your yard clean and neat. Don't have garbage out there that's open. Make sure you don't have brush piles placed where they can hide. You take care of the lawn maintenance around your house. You shouldn't have to worry about coyotes because chickens are in a pen, a secure pen. Usually penned over top, so the worst thing about coyotes is garbage. Because they're, they're trying to get whatever easy meal they can get.
I think you'd have more trouble with dogs.
Yeah, dogs. Possums, raccoons. Oh, my!
Any other questions from residents? All right, hearing and seeing none. Close their chicken ordinance. Moving on to the ethics ordinance investigation, I will hand this part over to the city attorney.
Thank you. Judy Preston made an ethics violation complaint against the mayor. This was done several months ago, and we're just now here. I needed to complete my investigation, but I wasn't here at your last meeting, so that's why we're doing it tonight. I apologize. The investigative report that was included in your packet originally, for reasons that we do not understand in our office, had everything except the mayor's statement, or a summary of her statement to me, which we've given. I don't know how that happened. My secretary doesn't know that it happened. I didn't notice it until I pulled up your, your packet and saw everything but those statements included. You'll also see on your agenda, tonight, attorney-client privileged a letter. Ellen, that relates to this, or at least that was the plan initially, or does that relate to something else?
Actually, it's a separate issue.
Okay, great. So anyway, you all have my report. I'm happy to answer any questions. I stand by that report. I spoke with everybody involved in it, and I've given you my thoughts for what they were.
And really quickly to clarify, Mike did notify us right away, actually yesterday, that the addendum was not, or the information about the mayor was not included. The packet online has been updated, and you guys have a copy of those comments, so just, just so, for full transparency.
If there's no questions, I've, I've made my recommendation, and that would be, it would be appropriate at this time. If someone wished to make a motion to accept that recommendation, or you can simply move on to the next item on the agenda.
I will make a motion right now that we.
I want to make a statement first. I'm sorry. We didn't call for questions, but I'd like to make a statement second. Is that okay?
So we're going to ask several questions.
Okay, so I don't have a question. I read through everything, and this is all I want to say. Based on the mayor's two thousand twenty-four ethics ordinance violation, there's cause to pause regarding this current issue. This is truly a she-said, she-said situation, but there is truth in there somewhere. I believe that. I'd like to say that I believe the drama that's being created negatively impacts our citizens. Every time a complaint is brought forward, our residents pay to have it investigated. And that's not fair to our residents. That upsets me greatly, spending money on something like this. So I can only caution the mayor that her position requires that we work together as a council. Questions need to be directed to our city manager and lawyer, and in some cases, the councilors on this council. Also, there are many classes that you can take to help with your learning experience. We know, and we empathize. Being a new mayor is very difficult. I truly empathize with that. MML has many great instructors, and I have in the past contacted those instructors and asked questions of them as well when I felt like I didn't get enough. When I started with city council, I went and sat in councillors' homes, talked about the budget. I was very insecure about it. I don't think I opened my mouth for a year at council because I was, I was afraid I was going to misunderstand something or not do something right. So, you know, I understand your caution with everything. But MML does have some great instructors. They will talk with you, and they'll continue to have contact with you if you'd like. I encourage you to look to your professional resources for assistance, not to our private residents. That's all I would say. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I will make a motion that we vote on this to just accept Mike Ilner's recommendations and so that we can go forward in a positive way. I mean, I think everybody's had enough, and let's put it to rest.
A second. A second. Armstrong?
Yes.
Link?
Yes.
Hyman? Yes. How?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
One thing, I don't believe we should have asked the mayor to vote on her own ethics, but there's enough of us to have passed it. Okay?
Let me say no.
No, it's just asking, just asking.
Listen, all of these situations are very unique, and, and it's tough, and when the ethics ordinance was put in place, I don't think it was intended for anything of this nature. But thank you, Mike, for going through the process.
Thank you, Mike.
So is the mayor stating that there, you did the concern, sir? So it'll be six votes yes. vote yes, one abstaining, or seven?
The vote should reflect an abstention on the Mayor's part. It should, the, the record should reflect an abstention on her part.
Okay, thank you.
And just for clarification, we, had we have known that, we would have prepared a, a motion and stuff, and I, I apologize, Mike, I probably should have discussed that with you, but do you want us to take a re?
No, that isn't needed.
Okay.
It was unanimous with the exception of one abstention.
Okay, okay.
All right, City Managers update?
Um, just a couple of things, we're, we're working on, right now, we're working on fiscal year end and it takes us a while, we've got a number of things to do to prep for that and then prepare for our next audit and things like that. Working on getting out water quality report, utility bills, taxes, things of that nature, just really trying to, now that a lot of these projects are in full swing and, you know, that's, working on those. As you guys know, I sent in an update a couple of weeks ago, or a week ago, an update on the mill, so we're kind of working through the eagle permitting process for the cofferdam that's required. We did try to see if there was any possibility of us still continuing with any, any portion of the work while we're still securing the permit for the cofferdam, but because it's all related to structure, they, the country, or the project manager advised that we not, until we get that cofferdam. So we're working through that process, we, we've had a number of meetings involving engineers, architects, project manager, all of us, but that's okay, I, I think that we've been successful to navigate that situation. So we're, we're working on getting them a number of items, hopefully yet still this week, we can get that to them and, and move that process along to get things moving. Once we get that permit in hand, then we'll be able to advertise the project for bids and then that'll be coming back to you all to, now we can hopefully start seeing some movement there. Also, as you guys know, we did have meetings with the individuals that we discussed at previous council meeting with the library and with the Historical Society about the occupancy of the, of the building, they're very positive. Don's working with the library on identifying the needs that they will have, so we can incorporate that as we move forward and make sure we have what they're, they're going to need. We had a conversation with Pete Moss and his wife in regards to the Historical Society and presented them, as you guys know, with the draft for lease, and ultimately what that does is just establish boundaries both ways and expectations, right? That's, that's really all that it is. And they did express, you know, disappointment that it wasn't more floor space and totally understand that, but we did take the opportunity to just discuss some potential other options that we might have. You know, as Don identified, we're going to have a lot more wall space within the, the building and so, you know, would they be willing to allow us to utilize, you know, artifacts or any, any displays, not necessarily cabinet displays, but more wall display type stuff that we could, you know, decorate the building with and, and things like that. So we're hopeful that everybody has the answers that, you know, they were looking for and then we can move forward. As you guys know, we still have the other two remaining floors, one will remain a flex space, rentable for the community, and then the other one will remain actively under, will, will actively try to market that for lease. So I think for us, we're just happy to know and have those, have those answers so we, we can move forward. Thank you all for your help with Memorial Day, staff, council, everybody that participated in that. You know, it, it was, it was a good day, definitely, and I think we served well over 800 hot dogs.
Hot doggy!
Yeah. And I know things were a little bit different this year and we, we were a little worried that we wouldn't have the numbers because we housed it in the community center, but we had the numbers, so it was good. So thank you all for that and thank my staff for, for executing to help make that day go easier and, Don, do you want to give a little update on the road projects and maybe the water, just a quick, quick little update, really quick?
Sure, so Lindenwood Project is substantially completed this time. All the underground work has been done, the asphalt paving has been done. We're going through a process, what's, what's called establishing a punch list, and what that is, is we hold back funding on closing out the project until such time as those punch list items can be completed to our satisfaction. Those would include things like finished landscapes, additional seeding that needs to take place, there are a few areas where there's some asphalt quality issues that we want to deal with, so we'll be working with the contractor on that. I expect that they should be back in, within the next couple of weeks to start checking those boxes and getting those things taken care of, so the, the end is near, we're just in those final stages of, of getting that one closed out. And then following that, for folks that lost trees as part of the construction process, we will be working with them if they're interested in having trees planted back to replace those. And I, I will just caution everyone that, you know, we can only establish trees that were moved as part of the project and we can only establish those back in the right-of-way. So those are always, there's always an opportunity for a underground project to require the removal of those trees, so if ever you get any conversations with people about memorial trees or trees that are, are important to them, make sure they plant those on private property outside of these. Wes Ralston, I sent an update to the folks that signed up for updates this afternoon. It started last week, road's been completely pulverized, so it is currently gravel road. I've heard comments that it's in better shape than it has been in years. So that's, I guess that's a good thing. Work, they're starting to do the undercut so that they can establish road drainage and start putting in the rock base. Unfortunately, they did come across, on Friday afternoon, they did come across two unidentified underground utilities, that brings everything to a stop when those things happen. And in addition, there were some unstable soils that didn't show up on the original soil, soil borings, and so many of you probably saw open holes over the weekend, which was something that we're trying to avoid. Unfortunately, the engineers requested that those stay open so that they could look at a resolution for those areas. So they, I expect this aft, late this afternoon, or by morning, we'll have an answer on the solution for that and then work should progress from there, hopefully run, run smooth from, from that point forward. We did start our overband crack fill program today on North Bridge, many of you may have seen that. We only got about a 20-minute notification that that work was confirmed. We knew last week that they were talking about starting as early as Monday, we didn't get confirmation until they were en route, so we did get out a notification as quickly as we could and so that work should continue on North Bridge until it's complete from city limit to city limit, and then they'll be moving into some of our secondary and residential neighborhoods.
The water changeover, we did, we've been on it over a month now and we did have Genesee
County bump up the pressure another few pounds last week. I'm maybe being overly cautious, but I, again, I have concerns about the age of the infrastructure and I won't say they ask me every week if I'm ready for pressure yet, but it's just about every week. And so we bumped it up a few more and we have gauges in different locations around the community that we are monitoring to just see how the system reacts, so we'll continue to use, or utilize that process and slowly make increases on those, so.
And one last thing, Grandparents' Day for Lucy, I'll put a plug in, it's this Thursday, so if you know anybody, bring your grandkids down, it's going to be a great day, they're going to have bowling, putt-putt, connect for, movies, crabs, I mean, hot dogs, root beer floats, all kinds of stuff they have planned, so.
Who have questions for Don?
Sally?
Questions for Don?
Oh, I, yeah, I, this was just my manager's report, so I was, that's, yeah, no, no, you're fine, you're fine, so I'm, I am finished.
I have one more thing. Laugh Pathway is hosting their Laugh Title &amp; Puddle event this Saturday. They are still in need of volunteers, we did put something out on our Facebook and emailed actually, not only the council, but all city boards and commissions and committees, so in that email was Heather Durham's personal cell phone information, as well as the general public email for laugh@laughpathways.com. You can email them and you will be signed up to volunteer.
Thank you, Krista.
Thank you. All right. Can we, do you have questions for Don? Okay.
This is a quick one, Don, you mentioned right-of-ways and some setbacks. How does one figure, what is the right-of-way distance that we, the city has access to? I mean, I know what mine is, but I know that it's different around the city, so how do we figure out from the center of the road to what spot on the property is actually a right-of-way?
So statutory norms are usually 66 feet, so 33 feet from the center of the road. I would encourage people to call and confirm that because they certainly vary depending on the age of the community, sometimes they're offset on, on one side more than the other and so generally speaking, 33 feet from center of road, but call to confirm, I think, is probably the best advice I can give.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, any questions?
Don, where are we at pressure-wise compared to, like on average, where we were prior?
So it depends on elevation of where, where homes are in the, in the system. Generally speaking, I think it's safe to say that residents should be seeing anywhere from a seven or eight pound to 12-pound increase right now.
I'm glad it's going to get better. I'm glad that you're planting trees. Memorial Day was a lot of fun, there was a lot of hot dogs and a lot of talking, asked Liz, she was talking a lot. She was out there talking to our residents, it was nice. And yeah, support the Laugh Pathway if you can, guys, it's, it's going to be a great event on Saturday from 10 to 8, right downtown here, and it's a really great cause. Can't wait for the Pathway to come in, there was a guy in front of me on a three-wheel bike, bicycle on the corner over by the lake, scared me to death, I wanted to get him out and put him on a pathway, but there wasn't one. So hopefully, that'll start soon.
I wasn't, we weren't killed to comment yet.
Oh, he asked if we had any other questions.
Yeah, just, yeah. All right, any other questions for Don?
I didn't see that on here. Okay.
All right, so with that, we're going to move into closed session for attorney-client privilege.
You just need a motion to go in and a second and then a vote, yep, sorry.
Are we doing council comments?
So, so, so they haven't been part of the, the work session, but it, I mean, that's up to you.
Oh, that's true, I'm sorry, that was Leo's day. I was just so excited about the trees.
And the, the letter that is privileged, can you identify it by date or?
They did, May 16th, 25, from Plunkett and Cooney.
So there would need to be a motion, roll call.
I will make a motion that we go into closed session to discuss Plunkett and Cooney's letter.
Second.
All right. Link?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Armstrong?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Simon?
Yes.
And we're actually going to move down to the annex.